I'd like to call this meeting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. At this time, I'd ask each and every one of you to rise. Myself, Chairman Larry Yeder will have the invocation, and Andy Ferguson, our Commissioner, will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our kind and gracious most heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity that you've given us to be able to gather here. We appreciate you and the things that you have done for us. We would ask that you would protect our military personnel, both at home and abroad. Be it those families who lost loved ones in the airplane crash, that they can bring peace to themselves when they find and locate this aircraft. Lord, we'd ask you to be with our leaders, both federal, state, and local, be it our law enforcement and our emergency personnel, and bless each one who's gathered here tonight. For we ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Well, tonight is a special night for we, the members of the Board of Commissioners. For seventeen years, we've had a gentleman that has served as county commissioner and served this great county in a manner that has been above and beyond. He has sacrificed himself from his family to give back to this county. And he's a man of integrity and a gentleman who has stood tall as a county commissioner. I've had the great honor of serving with him for the last eight years, and he is one of those true statesmen that you enjoy working with, and he always does his homework, and he always comes prepared to the meetings. And at this time, I'd like to ask Darrell Robertson to please come forward. Darrell, it's not often that I get to do this, you know? And now that I'm sitting up there and you're not, it's my opportunity to do the talking and you do the listening.
And I've also understood as a Commissioner, you don't want this many people behind you if you can't watch them.
Well, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. But for years, Darrell, I just want to tell you that you've been a mentor to me. You have helped me in tremendous ways, but you've also helped the citizens of this county. With the things that you've done and serving and trying to be as fair as you could be, and your integrity is above and beyond reproach. And I've known you for a long time, and I appreciate the things that you've helped me accomplish and for me to understand what it takes to be a Commissioner and what it takes to give back to the county and to your community. And you make a lot of sacrifices from your family. Folks don't understand sometimes when you're county commissioner, you're gone quite a bit. There's a lot of things you have to do. You can't always go to your kid's ballgame because you may have a meeting that you need to go to, and Darrell has done that. And for, I'm going to say at least sixteen years I know of, he's served on the Social Services Board. He's served on the Mental Health Board and represented Alexander County in a tremendous way, especially with the changes of mental health was taking place. Most of you may not know about the mental health program in North Carolina. It has gone through some drastic changes, and the whole time it's going through those changes, Darrell Robertson was representing Alexander County. And he served the county with distinction, and I am proud to know Darrell Robertson. I am really proud that I had the opportunity to serve with you, and it's been a pleasure. And I speak for this board, and I think I speak for the citizens of this county, what you have done and what you mean to these citizens. And for that, I'd like to present to you this key to the county. It says, "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners disposes this key to the county upon W. Darrell Robertson in recognition of seventeen years of outstanding service as an Alexander County Commissioner from 1996 to 2013, presented April the 7th, 2014."
Thank you.
Oh, I appreciate it. This hangover's, baby. It ain't over yet. I'm not going to bring you a rocking chair today, I can tell you that. You know? Now, I guess the reason I did this is because I was the chairman, and I had served the longest with you. Berkey had served for a couple, two and a half years with you, three years, maybe. And for years, I've watched these folks that had different things happen to them. And now, Darrell, it's my honor to dispose upon you by the authority that's given to the state of North Carolina. This is the Order of the Longleaf Pine, and it's presented to you by the Honorable Governor of this great state of North Carolina, Pat McCrory. And it says here, it says, "Pat McCrory, Governor..." I had to get my glasses. Yeah, I can't see. I'm sorry. I should have been prepared, but I thought I could read this without them. I must be getting old. "Pat McCrory, Governor, reposing special confidence and integrity, learning, and seal of W. Darrell Robertson. I do by these presents confirm the Order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of Ambassador extraordinary, privilege to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which it's a special privilege to purpose the following North Carolina totes and select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State, signed on April the 7th, 2014 by the Honorable Governor of great state of North Carolina, Pat McCrory. And it's my honor, sir, to present this to you and for everything that you've done for this great county and for the state of North Carolina and to the citizens of this county. Thank you, my friend. It's been a pleasure."
Appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure. If it's family, it's just a minute, Darrell's going to say a few words. I'd like for his entire family is here tonight, to the best that I can tell, and I'd like for you all to come up and have your picture taken with Darrell, and we'll get that taken if you don't mind, please. So Darrell, whenever you're ready, but I know you've got a few words you'd like to say.
Let's get the picture first.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Jack, bring him up here, buddy. Oh, come here, buddy. Oh, yeah. And Robertson's over the back. She's in. Matter of fact, to get my family is, people, people, I, we're all, come on. Come up here and just get a picture. See you right there, Pat. We're more practical, too. I really wasn't expecting that, especially this. Thank you. Of course, my term would have been up this year, and when people would ask me if I was going to run again, I would tell them, "I've got to talk to Jackson and see whether he thinks we've got enough time for me to be a county commissioner and do the stuff he and I need to do." So I'm sure that there wouldn't have been enough time to handle all that. But I want to thank my family, all of them. My immediate family is up here, my brothers and their family back here. I want to thank all of them for their encouragement and their support and their willingness to let me have time to work in Alexander County. And now that I've said that, there might have been a couple of times when they'd just sooner I was somewhere at the county than hanging around them, but I do appreciate and I thank you for your support. Also, want to thank the Commissioners that I've served with because everybody has dealt straight up. There wasn't any junk or behind-the-door politics, that kind of thing. And people will find this strange, I'm sure, but anytime you get two people who think they're going to have some things they disagree on. And with all the Commissioners I've served with, they all thought at times we disagreed on some things. And it was always done straight up, straightforward, and with respect, and I appreciate them and their willingness to tolerate me, and I also thank them for their willingness to share and have their input. It is a genuine team effort, and I thank the current Commissioners as well as other Commissioners I have served with. I also like to thank county staff, especially the county manager and Jamie, clerk to the board. You can't begin to imagine the stuff they have to pull together, do, organize, to keep everything, the information going in both directions the way they do, and certainly appreciate what y'all do. Also, need to thank and appreciate the county employees because Alexander County is a small county, and our employees know the departments they work in, they know who they work for, and they know how information has to flow. But at the same time, the departments know each other, and they'll pick up the phone and call. And because they know each other and they work together, sometimes it simplifies the process of getting things done, and I do appreciate the employees of Alexander County. And I do appreciate the citizens of Alexander County. It has, I've always been surprised since we started putting the meetings on TV and the computer where people can see them, how many people will say, "Well, I saw the meeting," or, and it just surprises you. And I'm thankful that there are people out there who are watching what goes on in Alexander County. And it makes you feel good when somebody says, "I saw the meeting," and they have a comment about it. All the comments may not be 100% behind a position you had, but they're very nice, very polite, and pointed out, and I'm glad that we have people who are aware of what's taking place in the county. And I know y'all want to get out of here by 10 o'clock. I'll only talk another hour or so. I can just see things being ripped away. One other thing I want to say, there are very few jobs that you have in life that you have the opportunity to make everybody happy, and this is one job because some people were happy when I ran, some people were happy when I did the job, and there are a lot of people who are happy now that I'm not around anymore. So it's one job that I've had the opportunity to make 100% of the people happy one way or another, and I especially thank them for the opportunity. I thank them for the encouragement, and I wish the current board and future boards ever success. And again, thank you for the key, and thank you for the Longleaf Pine. I do appreciate it. Thank you all.
Does any Commissioner have anything they'd like to say? At this time, I'd like for the members of the Social Services Board to please stand, Social Services Department, to please stand. These are the people that Darrell has worked with on the board. I know some of them were here earlier, I guess they... Holly, is there anything you'd like to say? If you would, you need to come to the microphone so the world can hear you. Okay?
I would like to say that we very much appreciate Mr. Robertson's service on our board, but I most want to say that I very much appreciate that he looks to his grandchild for the advice on when to move on with his life and how special it is to know that your family and your time here is very limited, and the time that you spend with them is very special. But his service to our agency and this county will never be forgotten, and he is always the person that we, as an agency and as a member of our board, knew could be trusted, was always a true leadership with the utmost character and honor, and we will hold him in highest regards even though he's no longer a member of the county Commissioners or our board. He will always be a man that's right up there with the top, so we will miss him. Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, thank you very much. Thank you to the family. And like I say, it's been a nice ride, and we appreciate everything you've done. Moving on to another recognition, I'd like to call on Matt Cooksey with Habitat for Humanity. I think he has some people with him also.
First, I'd like to introduce who's with me. Chuck Wills is the District Governor for the Lions, so our club is one of the member clubs, but he represents the entire district this year as the governor, and with him is his wife Cindy. And Lisa is here from the Taylorstow Lions Club, and Hazel Yoder as well. They have decided to partner with Habitat. Something special has started happening. We had a visually impaired person apply for a Habitat home, and the Lions Club works with visually impaired people, so they took this as an opportunity to get involved, and so we are going to be doing what's called a Lions Build, and it's going to happen this summer. And through that, Lions International makes money available, so there'll be a matching grant, a challenge grant, as being offered out there, and so we need to raise money locally, and the Lions Club has gotten busy and started doing that. In fact, there's a Bojangles Night going on right now at Bojangles, where 15% of the proceeds are going to this build. But mainly, we wanted to talk about an event coming up on May the 25th down at Hickory Crawdads. It is going to be a night for raise money for Habitat in the Lions Club Build, and in it, you've got a voucher that was left on the seats, and we are trying to make them as publicly out there as we possibly can. Is that if you bring this voucher into the game, you get a $9 seat, it costs you $5. But the miracle of it is they're also going to give four more dollars of your five that you paid will actually come back and go to Habitat here in the county. So that night will hopefully be a huge fundraising night, and so we've tried to put out the challenge in the community and just want people to know about it, to ask for this voucher, take it with you and use it, because we'd like to fill the stadium with everybody from Alexander County and just put on an impressive display of how much we care in this county for each other. So I hope people will join with us in showing up at that night.
Thank you, man. This is a big event for this county. It's the first time that I know of that the Habitat for Humanity, along with the Taylorstow Lions Club and District 31B, I still remember, District 31B Lions Club, they're all doing this together, and there's been donations made. The one thing that Matt possibly didn't say, if he did, I missed it, if they raised $25,000, the National Lions Club Foundation, am I right, District Governor?
The International Board.
International Lions Club Board. Can you explain that if y'all don't mind?
It's 12,500. If we raise 12,500 here locally, they will match it with 12,500, bringing it to a total of 25,000 earmarked for that house.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure because I think that's a very ritual for our community. There's a lot of people that stepped in and helped, and I know more about it probably than I should, but I'm glad that my wife's been extremely actively involved in that.
Yes, she is. She keeps me so busy, I don't know how you do it, Larry.
Well, I'm just proud of all of you for what you're doing because I think that brings the community together because right now, the entire community is working on this project, and it's the benefit of a young man that has needed a home for a long, long, long time. So you're to be committed on your project, and I hope all the best to you and hope it is successful.
Thank you for the time to share it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks. Okay, all right. That's all of our special recognitions tonight. The next item on the agenda is Commissioners Report. Do any Commissioners have anything they want to say? I have a couple of things that I want to say. I guess this is talk Larry Yeder night. Couple of weeks ago, it was our last Commissioners Meeting. There was items brought up and discussed about our budget and what will be going on for 2013 and '14. Since that time, we had a finance meeting, and the finance meeting was one of those where we discussed things and talked about what was going to happen, what possibly would happen. And I'm just going to give a little update about the way I see things, not necessarily the way the entire board says, but this is the way I see it. And I just want the community, I want the different departments, and I mostly want the citizens of this county to understand where we're at. The 2013-2014 budget, adopted a budget, appropriated over $3.5 million fund balance, which is adopted. At that time, there was a 3-2 vote on not, on the budget. $35.8 million of the general fund would be used. That's $35.8 million in the general fund. Now, looking ahead, I don't foresee this board voting for a tax increase. I don't see that happening. And based on the things and the knowledge that I have at this time, I don't see that tax increase happening. The county departments have requested over $38 million in general fund, and we, the county Commissioners, of course, have heard from county departments with larger requests on March the 24th. For example, EMS asked for nearly a million dollars more for a fourth crew, and that was discussed openly in the meeting. So where will all this leave us? This is the way I see it. There's a $32 million in currently generated revenue in our general fund. The current budget is $35.8 million. Without a tax increase, services will have to be reduced, and the 2014-2015 budget will have to be much less than the current budget. Although some balance, although some fund balance will have to be used, we could not live on our fund balance. Almost every project discussed last year will have to be delayed. These projects will have to be delayed, and these are the ones that I'm speaking of. Rocky Face Park Grant, as most of you know, we got a grant to do Rocky Face Park. Without a tax increase, I do not see that project happening in the next fiscal year. That's the Phase Two of the program. Evidence Storage Building for the Sheriff's Department, I don't see it happening. County Garage, don't see it happening. Demolition of the Dayton Building, which I think most of us feel like needs to be torn down, but I don't see it happening. No fourth EMS crew, I don't see it happening. No new vehicles for the Sheriff's Department, I don't see it happening. More funding for our schools, I don't see it happening. Now, I say all this to you, just to let everybody know where we're at and what's going on. Also, it is important to note, to spend $3.5 million in fund balance and to continue to spend fund balance will greatly impact our ability to receive any loans. This will not be for one year, but for several years. For example, the county will not be eligible for any low or no interest loan for water projects for several years until the fund balance is built back up. This also could impact industry and industry recruitment. And I'm letting y'all know this because this is just coming from me, okay? It has nothing else to do with any other Commissioner. If you look forward beyond 2000 and 2015, how does our situation change? How do we increase our fund balance when our local sales taxes are flat and property taxes are flat? The General Assembly, and trust me, I asked this question last Tuesday night, I believe it was, at the North Carolina Association County Commissioners District Meeting, how they felt and what they thought the state of North Carolina might do. Alexander County would request from their representative for a one-cent sales tax increase just to come only to Alexander County and to see as to whether or not that they would go along with even allowing the citizens to vote on this. Their answer was, based on the General Assembly that we have now and the people they have representing in Raleigh, they didn't see any way that would be possible to get a one-cent sales tax this coming year. So the General Assembly would not approve that. I give you this information so that each and every one of you can think about it, you can dwell on it, you take it for what it's worth, and that's exactly the way I feel about the situation, and I wanted everybody to know that. And it was my opportunity during the Commissioners Report to speak those words, and I appreciate my fellow Commissioners, and I appreciate Alexander County, and I respect the departments that made the request. And as you all know, in request, there are several things that happen. Number one, you've got a wish list, then you have the won't list, and then there's the absolute need list. And all of us and our families have to do this from time to another because, you know, we can't continue spending and spending and spending. Something's got to stop somewhere. If funds don't go up and the revenues don't go up, then the spending's got to come down. And that's where we're at this time, so I give you that as information only. Does any other Commissioner have any kind of report they'd like to make? There being none, gentlemen, the agenda was presented to you, and I'd ask this time for a motion to approve the agenda as is.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Second.
Motion's made, and second, is there any discussion? There being none, the agenda... Oh, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, there's no one opposed. I will also tell you this, Commissioner Bush is out of the county this week. She will be back in town later in the week. Commissioner Mayberry is not here because he had sickness and his family, and he cannot be here, so that everybody will know where our fellow Commissioners are tonight. Public comment, did we have anybody sign up? No one signed up, so for that, we'll move to item number two. And everybody needs to remember, if you're going to speak during public comment, you need to call the county board and talk with Jamie and make an appointment so that you can sign, so that you can get on the agenda to speak. Item number two on the agenda, resolution authorizing county inmates to work on projects to benefit Alexander County. This time, I'd call on Commissioner Ferguson, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, Mr. French and citizens of Alexander County, what we have before us is a resolution authorizing under Article Four, Chapter 162-58, the North Carolina General Statutes to empower the, or give the sheriff the ability to use inmates from the county jail to work on projects to benefit Alexander County. What this is, this is a North Carolina General Statute under the provisions of the Office of the Sheriff, Chapter Four, or Chapter 162-158. It also includes Chapter 162-59 and Chapter 62-60. And what this resolution is, the way that the statute reads, this will empower the sheriff's office to be able to use inmate labor in conjunction with their sentence to allow them rehabilitative projects to work for the county, it works for the interests of the county. What this is not, this is not a requirement that the sheriff use inmate labor. What this is, is it gives him the ability to create a program, a work release program, a work program within his inmates, as he has inmates. And ostensibly, what this resolution is for is in the event of overcrowding or in the event that you have inmates that are only going to be there for a short duration, maybe a week, two weeks or so, we're not talking about using violent inmates, we're not using any kind of inmates. The sheriff has ultimate discretion on who gets to lead the facility, to work under the supervision of either a sheriff's deputy or a county employee. When this type of, Chapter 162-58, work program has been used in the past, it's usually used with very low-level, security-level inmates, DUIs and whatnot. Also, what can accompany this is this also gives the judicial officials a one more tool in their toolbox to support positive rehabilitation for inmates. It's pretty cut and dry as what it is, just giving the sheriff the ability to use inmates. It's pretty cut and dry as what it is, just giving the sheriff the ability to use inmates past the trustees that he uses internally.
And the thing about Commissioner Ferguson, I believe also, that if a, a county employee is designated to supervise these people, these inmates, while they're working, they go through a training with the Sheriff's Department in order to be able to do this. We just don't turn inmates loose with the county employees, so there they are. Is that not correct?
That is correct. As a matter of fact, under this section, Section Three of the resolution, it's mandated that county employees who do use inmate work crews, for whatever reason, have to go through a training program administered by the sheriff. Basically, what we would have in this condition is the same thing that the Department of Transportation uses the inmate work crews from the, the state prison on the roadside, picking up trash and whatnot. This allows the county to basically do the same thing.
Now, are you making this in the form of a motion, sir?
Yes, I will make a motion that, that the commissioners will approve and adopt the resolution authorizing county inmates to work on projects to benefit Alexander County.
Motion's made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded, now is there further discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ferguson.
Thank you, sir.
Item number three on the agenda, the Millersville Sewer Agreement. At this time, I'd call on County Manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the, what we call the Millersville Sewer Agreement, or the Intergovernmental Agreement for Development of Public Sanitary Sewer. This is an agreement between Alexander County and the town of Taylorsville to extend sewer, or construct sewer along the North Carolina 16 South Corridor. It's a 20-year agreement where the county would pay $15,000 annually, and that would be for, that would go towards the debt service for this extension of this line. We would split the tap fees with the town and also split the sewer minimums. We've been talking about this for some time, and this would lead to a partnership with the town to extend sewer and to extend economic development into that area. And again, it's a 20-year agreement for $15,000 a year, and it's to be paid once the line is completed. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
And it'd probably be, Mr. French, if I'm not mistaken, it'd be, what, two years before it's completed?
Yes, or something like that.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
So you'd be looking at the 2016-2017 budget.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other commissioner have any questions? I didn't entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion with the, we accept the Millersville Sewer Agreement as proposed.
The motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, but any other discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm glad to see us doing some cooperative.
Cooperative things, yes.
Things with the town, that's good.
Yes. Item number four, I'd call on, I don't think Cindy Holman is here tonight, she had to be away at another meeting, but we do have with us Holly Young, Children's Services Program Manager from Social Services, and this is in reference to Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow county commissioners. We have presented you, I believe already, with the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. April is the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. The governor has also issued a proclamation, and we are asking that the county also adopt and proclaim that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Anything else?
Well, I do have some.
Would you like to read the proclamation?
No, I would, I would prefer that you read the proclamation, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you very much, okay? I'll, I'll be more than glad to, I'll put my glasses on this time, so I'll be prepared. Alexander County, North Carolina, Child Abuse Prevention Month 2014, the proclamation, whereas children are vital to our state's future prosperity and quality of life, and whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable, nurturing, and healthy homes and communities that foster well-being. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a public responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life in North Carolina. And whereas, to prevent child abuse, parents need support and resources to help cope with stress and nurture their children to grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed through partnerships created among citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and other business communities. And whereas the state of North Carolina is committed to preventing child abuse and calls upon all citizens from all walks of life to increase their participation in efforts to support families and thereby prevent child abuse and strengthen communities. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Alexander County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Alexander County, and urge our citizens to support this observance.
Thank you, sir.
That sound good?
Very good.
Absolutely. And I, and I think, you know, the one thing about child abuse that a lot of people don't realize, it's all of us, our responsibilities to make sure if we do see child abuse that we should report it.
Yes, sir, it is.
If I'm not mistaken, Holly, it's also a state law, is it not?
It is. North Carolina is a mandated reporting state, which means that anybody who has cause to suspect that child abuse or neglect is occurring, report that. That does not mean to have to have all the facts or have to know all of the circumstances, they only have to suspect that it is occurring. I did bring with me some numbers tonight that I would like to share with you, and just a couple things that we're doing in the county over the next year to bring child abuse awareness to the community, and also some projects that we're working on. But just some numbers that kind of cover the past five years of the work that we've done here in the county I wanted to make you aware of. We have received 4,702 reports of child abuse and neglect, and of those 4,702 reports, we have accepted for investigation or assessment 3,045 reports of abuse and neglect, and that is over the past five years. That does not count our current fiscal year. So that would be from 2008 until the June 30th of 2013. We have assisted other counties with 593 reports that they needed assist with. We have helped or have been involved with 5,514 children in five years that were alleged to be abused or neglected in our county. We have filed 86 juvenile petitions involving children that live in Alexander County. We have had 107 children enter our custody, meaning that we had to remove them from their home because they were not safe to live in their own home. We had a maximum number of 206 children in our custody over the past five years, with the highest number of children in our custody being in 2012, 2013, and that was 59 children. And we have had a total of 37 children that we were able to place in a safe and permanent home, and we were not able to reunify their children in the past five years. All counties in the state of North Carolina are required to have what is called a Community Child Protection Team. And our Community Child Protection Team is also paired with our Community Collaborative, and that is a partnership, just as it says, a collaborative, with our community partners, school guidance counselors, local mental health agencies, daycare partners, law enforcement agencies, juvenile court counselors, there's just a large number of partners. And we have identified some goals for our team over the next year. One of those goals is to work collaboratively to identify the mental health resources in our community that both our parents and children can access and receive quality mental health care. We have identified a gap, especially for our children. They are not able to receive the level of mental health care that they need, or the quality of care that they need. There is a pretty clear basis to show that our children wait for long periods of time to see therapists in their home community if they are indigent or on Medicaid. They also wait long periods of time in between appointments to be able to see those same therapists. They also are not receiving the most recent evidence-based practices, and so we are working with Smoky Mountain Center and RHA and some other local providers to try to alleviate that problem, so that our children can continue to remain in our community and see therapists here, because I think most of you are already aware that children who live in this county and in our communities have issues with transportation, and it's very important for their parents to be able to seek those resources here. One of the other goals that we have set for ourselves is reaching out to the faith community to bring awareness to those folks about child sexual abuse prevention in their churches. There is a program called Darkness to Light, some of you may be familiar with that program. It was born in Charleston, South Carolina. There is a training program called Stewards of Children, and it is aimed at the community as a whole, but is really geared for daycare, churches, coaches, rec departments, and does a lot of work with maintaining and keeping a safe environment where there are large numbers of children and adults who care for them. And so we're really going to engage and target those members of our community in the coming year to try to get them trained, to bring some awareness to those folks about what they need to do to be sure that the adults that work with children in those settings are, know what to do and how to respond to children and how to keep themselves safe in those settings. And so those are some goals that we have set for ourselves as a group in this community, and some things that we want to work on, and wanted you all to be aware that we're gonna be working on those things, so, thank you.
You know, Holly, the thing that I think a lot of people didn't understand, that trying to get mental health treatment and trying to get the therapists and the people that we need to take care of these people with the problems that they have, is just an ongoing problem, because there's not enough trained therapists out there, most of the time they get them, and it's hard to really get them to come into the rural setting.
It's very, very difficult. And I will say that Smoky Mountain Center and our local indigent provider, who is RHA, the cornerstone provider in our county, have worked very closely with us, and we are continuing to work together, and they understand the need, but we have identified that as a major need in our county, and it's not just for children, there's also a need for their parents as well. The numbers I gave you of the children in foster care, those parents, a lot of those folks struggle with substance abuse issues, and we don't currently have an intensive outpatient substance abuse program in our county, although there is some work being done on that. We have not had a program for about four years now. But we're working on those things, and we continue to work on them, but there has been some lapse in service for quite some time now, and so we know that those folks need to be brought together, and that we need to continue to have decision-makers at the table, and folks who can hold people accountable and really talk about those things. And so we are really focusing on that in the coming year.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, make a motion that we approve April as, as the, oh, I started with those kids, I was sitting here thinking about Shriner's, that no man stands so tall as when he stoops to help a child. I think that's one of the greatest mottos that I've ever seen, that I've ever heard, and I think that's true for all adults, that, you know, nobody stands so tall as when they stoop to help a child, and get on their level, be down with them, you know? But I make a motion that we approve the Child Abuse Prevention Month 2014.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number five on the agenda, announcement of Shredded Day for Alexander County residents. Mr. Josh Mitchell, Solid Waste Director.
Good evening, commissioners. Wanted to come tonight to make an announcement about the upcoming Shredded Day. It's gonna be Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Alexander County Administration Building Parking Lot. We do have a limit of five boxes per vehicle to keep the line moving, and it's for the Alexander County residents only. This is a green event. I call it a green event because all the paper that's shredded is recycled in the end, and this is also right around Earth Day, which is a day designed to remind us that we have to take care of our planet, and recycling is important. If you have any questions regarding the Shredded Day, you can call my office at 632-1101, or shoot me an email at, email at jmitchell@alexandercountync.gov. The Shredded Day is a pretty simple thing. You pull up, there's a shredded truck there that shreds the material while you're on site, you can watch them destroy your documents, so you don't have to worry about it falling into the wrong hands, and they'll help you unload it and take care of everything. So I think it's something we want folks to take advantage of, because we get calls about it pretty regularly.
I think it's one of the best things that's going on. People really like that, especially with the people stealing their information and using it, and identity theft and everything, and so I think a lot of people are really taking more advantage of our Shredded Day.
Yes, sir.
They really do.
Come on out, because it costs us the same amount either way. If two people show, two people show up, or a thousand, you know, it costs the same amount of money, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Josh, how big of a box, I mean, do we have a limit to the?
I mean, we don't have an exact size, but just, you know, say a 20 by 20 box, something like that, it's just to keep the line moving, because if somebody shows up with a pickup truckload of documents, then it can get backed up, because they are shredding as you go there. But they move the room pretty fast, so. The guys, they even, if you have a box that you keep your documents in, you want it back, they, I mean, they give you the, the box back, or if you don't want it, they shred the box and everything, so. You don't have to worry about staples or paper clips or nothing like that, it, it takes care of all of it.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
I did say that I took advantage of it last year, and it, like you said, it moved fairly smoothly. You just bring your boxes and hand them off to the guys that are there, and they put them in the shredder, and you're gone.
I think it's cool that you can watch them do it, so it puts you at ease that it's gone and done with, so.
Very good. While you're up there, Josh, let's look at item number six, Solid Waste Management Annual Report Trans, Josh Mitchell, the Solid Waste Director.
Every year, NCD or North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources puts together an annual report that details per capita recycling rankings per each county. Basically, that means we track and keep up with all the recyclable materials that the county produces, that's kept out of the landfill, the materials reused or remanufactured in some way, and at the end of the year, we turn those numbers in. Excuse me. They take that tonnage of recyclable materials and divide it by the population of the county, that gives you a number which is your per capita recycling ranking. Over the years, if you look at the chart in front of you, Alexander County has slowly climbed the list, well, not slowly really, I shouldn't say, but if you see, in 2003, we ranked 85th, recycling 34.53 pounds of material a year per person. In the most recent report, which will be the 2012-2013 fiscal year, we have moved up into the top 20 to 16th, recycling 166.6 pounds a person per year. To me, this is great news. When I first started doing this, I never thought we would get inside the top 20, that was kind of the goal, and we hit, and got up to 18th for two years in a row, and we kind of was afraid we'd stalled out, but this year, we moved up a little bit more. Now, I think the Solid Waste Department's goal is to try to get in the top 10, and hopefully we have some things maybe coming down the pipeline that'll offer the citizens, you know, more materials they can recycle, that we're able to keep out of a landfill, and we can get on up there in the rankings. If you look on the list, you can see that, you know, we're beating some fairly large counties in the per capita ranking, which makes us proud, you know, we're ahead of Mecklenburg, Guilford, Forsyth, Wake Counties. So those are some fairly big counties that are able to have programs that we are not, and we are still ahead of them on the per capita list. So I just want to thank the citizens for taking the time to recycle, all the convenience site employees, the landfill employees, because they're the ones that are out there educating people on the importance of recycling, the materials that we can accept, and, and things like that. So I want to thank all those folks, because this is not possible without them.
Very good.
Josh, I'd, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
For getting the grant for the trailers for the convenience centers, for electronics and so forth, so that basically wouldn't, they wouldn't have to be, these are, these are heavy pieces of, you know, old computers and.
Yes.
Terminals and so forth, so that the folks that man the convenience sites don't have to handle them twice.
Yes.
You put them on the trailers, and so I just want to give you kudos for obtaining that grant for those trailers, that was a, a good deal.
Thank you. And we are recycling somewhere around 10 tons of electronics a month now, that's, that's pretty impressive. You would never believe the amount of TVs that comes out of this little county.
Very good. Things look good down there. The one I go to on 16 South, the employees do a good job.
They all do a good job. They make my life a lot easier.
Well, I just, that's the one I go to, so that's why I talk about them, you know, but I appreciate all the job all of you do, you know? Keep working, try to get up there in the top five.
Let's go for 10 first.
Top five, top five, you know?
Top 15.
Yeah. But y'all all have done a good job. I know where it was a long time ago and it's a vast improvement from where we've been to where we have now.
And I want to, you know, while I've got the mic here, encourage everybody to, if you're not recycling, start recycling. If you know somebody that's not, encourage them to. The way I always try to sell it is the way we're set up here is a pay-as-you-throw county. So the more you recycle, the less your garbage costs you. So, you know, everybody says money talks, but not only is it cheaper for you, but it's also the right thing to do with this material. Instead of burying it in a landfill forever, these materials can stay in the cycle of things and be reused for lots of different things.
I watched a program on TV the other night, not that I'm going to take up a lot of time, but on TV, they showed a recycling program where they stopped at a people's house, they laid out plastic, took their garbage out there and opened it up and started spreading it out. And when they got finished, there wasn't anything in there that they could not have recycled.
Right.
Everything had a place to go if you just take the time to totally recycle it.
Well, that's the eventual, eventual goal is, you know, zero waste. But, you know, it's tough to do with some things, but like I say, hopefully we got some things maybe coming in near future where we'll be able to accept even more materials than we are now. We're continuously adding things as it makes sense for us. And one other thing is like, well, our recycling program, we don't really spend very much money on it, other than patching recycling bins and, you know, we've had some T-shirts and pins made up over the years, but other than that, we don't really spend a whole lot of money on this program.
Very good. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number seven on the agenda tonight, road to graduation. I'd call him Captain Chad Penn with the Alexander County Sheriff's Department.
I'm here as a board member for communities and schools. And I'm going to be very short and sweet. On August, give you a little background, community and schools. August 9th of 2012, a task force was, of community leaders, voted to bring community and schools to Alexander County under Wilkes County, under the umbrella of Wilkes County. Since then, there's been a dedicated community and school site coordinators at East West Middle Schools and at Alexander Central High Schools, helping the students. The mission of community and schools is to surround students with community support, empowering them to stay in school and to achieve better things in life. One of the requirements is to have a sitting advisory board. This board is made up of about 15 to 20 community leaders, which would help guide the process of Alexander County communities and schools. Currently, we have 16 board members and four committees, four separate committees, each with a purpose. One would be like raising money, one that would be like getting the press information out about communities and schools and so forth. Glendora Yarborough is executive director, who guides the site coordinators. She works both for community schools in Wilkes County and in Alexander County. Angie Yates is the lead site coordinator. She's recently moved from West and is now at Alexander Central High School. Brittany Loudermilk is the site coordinator at East Alexander Middle School and we're currently in the process of hiring a site coordinator for West. Right now, Angie's covering both the high school and West. Just so you know, Communities and Schools is nationally a nonprofit and is the country's leading dropout prevention organization. Communities and Schools is proud partner of United Way of Alexander County and the only reason I'm here tonight is to invite all the commissioners and Mr. French, who's also a board member, to road graduation reception, which will be held at ACHS Auditorium on Tuesday, May 6th, from 5:30 to 7:00. Just drop in and if you would, I'm going to give you your invitations and a phone number up here. If you think you can attend, that you'd please call ahead and let them know because there's going to be light refreshments there.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
I've got these for you.
Be fine, sir.
Chad, I have one question for you when you get back to the podium. How are at-risk students identified?
That is done by the school system and there's a, I don't know, the whole process is in there. That's more of Glendore can, Glendore, Angie Yates, or one of those can pick and tell you, but that's done by the teachers and their scores throughout the year and things that would make them lead, that this person would need some assistance in certain areas. And those areas could be varied. It may not be necessarily with the schoolwork. It could be certain needs that this person might would need, a backpack or so on and so forth. There's a lot of different things that Community and Schools does, but that's more done through the school system on how they're identified and things of that nature. I'm not completely in the whole loop on that.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I...
That's all right, I don't mind.
Probably guidance council would have...
They help a lot. All the school systems sort of just picks, you know, they pick those groups of people and then each one of those kids would have a coordinator that they'd be working directly with and a mentor that they could be working with.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cap. All right. Item number eight, Smoky Mountain Center update. Shelley Foreman, Senior Director, Planning and Public Affairs.
How are you today?
Good, thank you.
First thing I would like to do is thank Mr. French for inviting me to this particular meeting. I was looking for a night I could come do an update and it has been such a pleasure to get to spend a couple hours with Darryl Robertson and reminisce about all the time he spent on our board and before that, the foothills area board and to get to see Jackson. I hadn't met Jackson yet, so that was really nice. So thank you for inviting me to the reception. I really do appreciate that. And I also appreciate, I don't know if Holly, I think she's left, that she did talk a little bit about our ongoing efforts in your county as far as identifying needs. That's something that we continually do and I think one of the things she mentioned that we face in most of our counties, especially the smaller rural counties, is recruitment and retention. It's very hard sometimes to recruit and retain qualified professionals when you have different organizations who are competing for those same individuals, especially when you look at psychiatric care. So I was making notes as she was talking and I will go back and validate that yes, this is something that is being worked on. And I probably will ask Mr. French to join in if he so desires. As you know, Mr. French is the chair of the Smoky Mountain Center Board. As of October 1st of this last year, Smoky Mountain Center, which currently, or at that time served 15 counties, 15 western counties, and those were the old foothill counties as well as the old New River Counties and the southern western counties, was asked to assume the management of all the Medicaid funds and state funds for behavioral health and intellectual and developmental services for the eight counties in the western Highlands area. Those eight counties include Buncombe, Mitchell, Madison, Henderson, Rutherford, Polk, Transylvania, and Yancee Counties. So Smoky Mountain Center, as of October 1st, and the full consolidation now serves 23 counties, which is a very, very large catchment area. One of the things that happened concurrently as we were coming to this consolidation is that the legislature last year passed what was called House Bill, actually Senate Bill 216. And that bill restructured area boards, which are the boards for local management entities and managed care organizations like Smokey. Up until that point, we had a board of directors that was made up of a county commissioner from each county as well as an out-large member. Here in Alexander County, you had Mr. Robertson as well as Mr. French, who served as the out-large member. With the enactment of that bill and with our consolidation with western Highlands, we had to restructure our board to meet the requirements of that legislation, which basically minimized that board number to up to 21 individuals. The legislation was very specific in outlining particular categories of people that needed to serve, who the legislature felt had the expertise to manage Medicaid, which is a much larger responsibility that we now have. And it did create eight out-large slots. And what we chose to do at Smokey and our board chose to do is to use those eight out-large slots and we will begin a rotation program, process for the county commissioners who had previously been on the Smokey Board, as well as some of the county managers that had been on the western Highlands Board. So in that way, we're trying to maintain as much commissioner input as possible and the county managers who had served from western Highlands. One of the things that that legislation also did that I wanted to talk to you about tonight and maybe generate interest, although it may be from one of the two who's not here who gets assigned, but as part of this process, Smokey Mountain Center, Board of Directors and Administration will be creating a county commissioner advisory council. Because one of the, one of the things that I think the legislators did recognize is that by taking commissioners off the board, that you no longer have that direct link to counties. And as we heard tonight, it's the county social services, board of commissioners, that really has to deal with all the issues in their community and know what those issues are. So I think that by forming this county commissioner advisory council, we'll be looking at how we can maintain that very close relationship between understanding the needs of the community, what's happening with our organization, and how we recruit providers and work with our providers to recruit the professionals they need. Right now, we're working at, I'm just getting out to all the counties to talk about the county commissioners advisory council. Your board of commissioners will designate the person who would like to serve on that council. We'll be working to develop a charter, like what are the goals of that advisory council? I think it really is important that it's a meaningful process for the county and for you as a commissioner, as well as for our board and for our organization, so that it's not just another council that we have going on. I think we have a very good track record. Our consumer and family advisory council is very involved with Smokey Mountain Center as well as our provider council, so I think we have a very good track record of engagement. I'm going to stop there before I go on and just ask Mr. French if he had anything he'd like to report on around our board or board formation or the advisory council.
No, I think you're covering it very well and, I mean, there's a lot going on with Smokey right now, so.
Yes. I think you made the understatement of the century and it's probably even more dramatic now that there have been changes in the mental health system since, you know, early 2000s and that continues to be the case. As you know, just about the time of our consolidation, Governor McCrory came out with his initiative called Partnership for Healthy North Carolina. And we had been working as, in the public management of Medicaid for about a year. We were one of the first LMEs to go live as of this, as of this last year. All local management entities have begun managing Medicaid across the state and that's for behavioral health and intellectual and developmental disability services. There was a long and thought-out process that the legislature used to really call on the public management of Medicaid, feeling that that was the best way to maintain a community presence for our most vulnerable citizens. And Governor McCrory's initiative initially talked about combining all Medicaid funds, which would include what we do, behavioral health, as well as intellectual and developmental disability funds, and then looking at managing all health and dental Medicaid services. And so what he is looking at is creating a process where all the Medicaid in the state of North Carolina is pooled. And initially, he was calling on one, two, three vendors, mostly private vendors, to come in and manage Medicaid. And that would be like United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield, it would be a private managed care organization. Because there'd been such a strong stance toward the public management of Medicaid services and there'd been also a pilot on the health side, there was a lot of pushback, I would say, from that. So the governor did appoint a committee to work with Secretary Voss. Her most recent plan that came out last month has backed away from the privatization a bit. Is now calling for the development of what are called accountable care organizations. For instance, I think in Alexander County, you have a FQHA organization. It's a federally recognized healthcare organization. That kind of organization...
If you tell the folks what an FQHA is, some people may not...
Okay, you may have to, Federal Qualified Health Association.
Right.
Okay. And that's just a federal designation that says they have the ability to manage Medicaid funds and care within that community. And here in Alexander County, the name of the organization, is it through the health department that they do it? Through the health department. So through the, that's the public management of Medicaid. So what this is now going to allow is the secretary is saying that across the state, they're looking for organizations to become these accountable care organizations that can manage Medicaid. They do have to be attached to an organization that does have that ability through the federal government right now to manage Medicaid. And it could work with their local management entity, managed care organization like Smokey to manage the behavioral health carve-out. Now theoretically, the governor has asked and the secretary that we consolidate down to four LME MCOs, managed care organizations, and that would mean that Smokey Mountain Center, CenterPoint, Behavioral Services, and Partners would have to work together to create a 32-county program. And that is something we are talking with those two LME MCOs about. There's a lot to consider. Our, our goal right now is to sort of see what happens with the legislature when they get the governor's report and looking at how these healthcare organizations could begin to sprout up across the state and begin to do the public management of the health dollars and then hopefully work with our more consolidated organizations to manage Medicaid. And this is really what we're trying to focus on, is keeping the management in the public sector versus the private sector, so that we maintain that community presence through our care coordination staff, community collaboration staff. It's very complicated. I don't know that I've explained it very well, but it's basically looking at how we really publicly manage Medicaid. And I think that now we have a governor and a secretary who's going to at least give us the opportunity to try to do that versus privatizing the whole system.
The biggest thing is making sure we provide the services.
And one of...
I guess that's what bothers me the most, you know, is that they've changed, they've touched, they've changed the law, they've done this, they've done that, and a son like Darryl Robertson talking. But at the same time, they have changed it so much and they still have not implemented or they have implemented, but it's hard to get the programs going to take care of the people that need the services and we're not getting to them. Instead, we're trying to continually to change to make things better, but, you know, I feel the pain of those folks when they're really trying to get the services that they need. And I know what you folks have been through and I understand that and I just hope that sooner or later this mental health thing settles down, that gets to where it needs to be, so that they can provide the services that they need to do.
And I really appreciate you saying that because I think we've really been calling on some stability in the system. We thought that we were to that place, you know, the year before last, as we were sort of evening out and beginning to manage Medicaid and we thought things would settle out. But with this new evolution, with the new administration, it has many of our providers very nervous. They worry about their ability to stay in business as they go through this process. And so of course, recruitment and retention is more challenging because many people think, well now, do I really want to come to North Carolina to work because that system has not stabilized over some time?
And I think it's one of the drawbacks of not getting the people that you need is because the stabilization has not been there.
I agree.
And I think that's caused us a tremendous problem in our area. My question to you is this, how do you feel about the three LMEs and getting all these counties together? How do you think that's going to work better or do you think that's going to cause the small rural counties to be affected where they did not get the services that we should get based on what your larger populations and your metropolitan areas are going to get?
Well, that's always a challenge for us, is, you know, we may never have the kind of service system that a Mecklenburg or a Raleigh and a Durham. But with the consolidation, here's what I think, and this is just from, you know, Shelley's perspective and from what I believe that our administration and board believes to be true. I mean, you know, you have to test these things out. I think that for the community, I mean, if I were, you're asking the perfect question. As you get bigger, what are you doing to maintain a presence in the community? What are you doing to respond to us? And if you continue to get bigger, how are we going to be affected? And what I can tell you is that with the public model that we have within Smokey Mountain Center and within all other MCOs, is there is a service that is available to individuals in your community that have mental health, substance abuse needs, or intellectual and developmental disabilities who are eligible for Medicaid. It's called care coordination. And that is a person from our organization who works with the high-risk, high-cost people who are in and out of crisis services, people have high acuity needs, or every person with Medicaid with the intellectual and developmental disability, to make sure that they're coordinating care for those people, trying to keep them out of high-cost services, trying to get them local community-based services. So that community presence will remain. The other staff that we have is, we have community collaboration... The other staff that we have is, we have a community collaboration staff, and those are people who are working with local consumers and families and doing peer support. They have individuals who work with your agencies here in the community to do planning and hear about the needs in the community. And we have Provider Network staff who continually work with providers in each community to help them look at what the needs are and how they are or not meeting needs. So I think with consolidation, many of the back office functions will be consolidated and centralized, in the sense that, you know, you don't need call centers, three different call centers, three different finance departments, three different claims processing. I think there'll be consolidation of back office functions, as we call them. But I think for the community, the staff that work, we call them boots on the ground, they will maintain their presence here, and they will, as part of the public model, be funded through the community dollars that we get. So I, I feel like that it's going to be an interesting evolution. I think what we're saying is that we are in partnership with these two other MCOs to talk about standardization, what we each do well, what we could learn from each other. And as we see what the legislature does, as far as how they react to the plan, I think we're going to be cautious in moving forward. You know, we're not going to, you know, jump ahead, we're going to sort of wait and see how things evolve, and then respond as the time is appropriate.
And Larry, I'd like to also point out that, I mean, one thing to keep in mind is that all the counties have a funding that they, you know, we appropriate, we basically be appropriating the same amount of money every year for probably the last 15 years or so, and it's-
We never ask for more.
Yeah, and they don't-
That's good.
But, but, but that, you could, more money, more service. And a lot of the things that we talk about, we can't, it's harder to offer that level of service and the timeliness that you need. Smokey Mountain does a great job with the resources that they have, but a lot of these things take more resources, which means it takes more funding.
Especially what we find is, yeah.
I understand.
And, and the other part that sort of compounds this, if you think about it, is hospital, we don't have a hospital, so you have that element of it. And the other element is, if we have someone, where the Sheriff's Department has to take one, someone that needs to be a commitment, they have to go to another county. You know, we're currently working with Caldwell County to try to, on a project that would help, help that. But again, we're traveling out of county to do that. So no matter what Smokey does, with our limited resources here, it's going to be a little bit more difficult. I mean, just to be straight about it, that's how it's going to be.
Well, I, I think that's one of the things, though, that the community needs to understand and need to know. I mean, these are things that, you know, you keep hearing, I can't get this, and I can't get that, but, I mean, it, it, it's a service that's out there, and it's hard to, to get it because of the fact of our limited resources that we have here in the county. And I think it's good to get this information out here, instead of throwing a rock at Smokey or throwing a rock at mental health. I think the people in the community need to understand, so that they'll know what to do. And at the same time, I think we've done a really good job, and I think Smokey has, of getting the information out, so that the folks will need to know, need to know where to go to get the assistance that they need. And, you know, and it's like anything else, to get the information out. I think we can do a better job, and continue to do a better job, and that's not a stone throw at anyone. I think that getting the information out there to our citizens and, and finding a way to communicate it, because as everyone knows, the communications and getting things out in this county is extremely difficult, unless you look at the county website, or the Taylorsville Times, or the Bethlehem Star, or the local radio station. So it is difficult. And, and the facilities are not here that we need, and I understand all that. But I mean, I like to report also, I mean, because it gets some understanding to the folks what's going on, I think, you know, and as I go back and say before, that I thoroughly believe that, you know, i- i- it, if, if you keep tinkering with the lawnmower, and keep tinkering with the lawnmower, the lawnmower's not going to run right, and you're not going to be able to get the service out of what you need. But if you settle and you use it the way it's supposed to be used, and, and you stop tinkering with it, then you'll get the things out of it that you need to get out of it to be more productive to the community.
Or you find out what's really wrong.
And that's basically what I'm saying. I mean, you know, and, I mean, I don't have, I mean, I suppose, plain and simple as I can put it, so, but I appreciate the job you do. And I know it's been extremely difficult, I spent a lot of time with Darrell talking about it, and I also spent a lot of time with Rick. Rick and I spent about 12 hours back and forth, though, riding up the other road, talking about it. So I think it's valuable information to the citizens of our county, that they understand what's taking place.
I would also like to say that if you need something, to talk to someone, there's always somebody that will talk to you. Shelley's just done a tremendous job working with the counties. And you think about it, she, she has to deal with every one of the counties, all the managers, all the commissioners, all the boards, and communicate that with them. I mean, she stays very, very busy, but you can call her-
Yeah, I know who to-
You can talk to her at seven o'clock at night, or on the weekends. She, she's, she's working the whole time. So her commitment's pretty high, so.
Right. And I, and I know that, I mean, from what I've known about, I mean, you know, so.
I know who to put you in contact with, but the one last thing I'd like to say about funding, because this is really important as far as resources, recruitment and retention is a huge issue, but the other issue we face is that especially in our communities, where we have a really high number of people who don't have, they're, you know, they may be working, but they don't have insurance, they're not eligible for Medicaid. Those are the people that we serve with our state funds. And as you know, every year, our state funds are cut, and they have been, you know, consistently since, you know, 2009. And so we have a smaller and smaller amount of money that has to serve all of those people who we call indigent, who have no insurance. And so it makes it very hard to try to have one organization, and we do it through our comprehensive provider like RHA, trying to give them as much of the state funds, so that they can be available and work with your community. I mean, you know who to go to. It's like if RHA, if you're having a problem, then you talk to Smokey and your comprehensive provider, and we try to work things out. But the state funding is really a huge issue for us, because we have so many people that that has to serve.
Anybody have any questions?
We'll stay in touch.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and giving this update.
Thank you so much for having me. I especially enjoyed coming today.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Item number eight on the agenda, proclamation and appreciation of Dana Roberts for 43 years of service to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. I'll read this proclamation, so that everyone will know what's going on here. Whereas Dana Roberts has served the Western Piedmont Council of Governments as a committed and dedicated employee for the past 43 years, whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary participation, vital for the accomplishments of the community she has served. Whereas her, her years of service have been characterized by zealous commitment to improve the community in which she lives and the public she serves. And whereas she holds the position of Administrative Service Manager of the Western Piedmont Council of Government, and has been the primary staff assigned to coordinate numerous meetings of the Western Piedmont Council of Government Policy Board, the Executive Committee, Regional City and County Managers, Regional Mayors and Managers, Regional County Chairman and Managers, and the Western Piedmont Council of Government Nominating Committee, as well as the Annual Meeting and Banquet. Whereas she organized and staffed the first regional Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association with Altenberg, Germany in 1997. Whereas she served as key staff in the formation of Future Forward Economic Alliance, a 12-county regional action in western North Carolina initiated to address economic and educational challenges caused by the loss of manufacturing jobs in this area. Whereas Alexander County gratefully acknowledges her 40 years, 43 years of faithful service to the Western Piedmont Council of Government and this community. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the citizens of Alexander County, publicly commend Dana Roberts for her outstanding contributions to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and the communities they serve. Adopted the 7th day of April 2014, Larry Yetter, Chairman. And gentlemen, I'd make this proclamation in the form of a motion, and they had a celebration for Dana, was it Thursday night? Thursday night? And all of us were at a District Association of County Commissioners meeting, where we're not able to go. But Dana has been a tremendous asset to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. She has worked there, and she has done a tremendous job in assisting local governments in the, in different areas of government. So I'd make that in form of a motion.
I make a motion that we support the proclamation and appreciation of Dana B. Roberts for 43 years of service for the Western Piedmont Council of Governments.
Mr. Chairman, second. Any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate raising your right hand. All opposed likewise, the motion carries. Item number 10, Alexander County Running Events Update, along with a video. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, and we have an events calendar, a running events calendar for 2014. There are 10 events in Alexander County in 2014. Last year, in 2013, we had over 2,500 people run and walk and participate in these events. We have different kinds of events, which I think's a great thing to offer the public and citizens. It also brings citizens to the, other people to the county, and that's a good thing. Hopefully, they'll spend some of their hard-earned money here. This past weekend, we had our, had Robins Run, which is a 5K event, held in Taylorsville, and it was very successful. The next event that's on the calendar is on May 24th, is the Rocky Face Trail Race. There's a 10K and a 5K race, and it'll be held in conjunction with the Second Annual Rocky Fest, which is just an outstanding event, and we'll see a video on it in just a second. I just want to mention some of the other things, other events that we have on the, on the horizon. We actually have, if you'll notice, we have three straight weeks of events. We have the Rocky Face Trail Race on May 24th. We have the Lake Hickory YMCA Triathlon on May 31st, which our local contact, Karen Martin with our YMCA, does just a great job with. And then the following week, we have the Carrying Hearts 5K, and that's a great event also, and great participation in, in all of these events. I think last year, the triathlon, triathlon had almost 300 participants. Robins Run and Carrying Hearts 5Ks are some of the biggest 5Ks in the area. Both of those 5K runs have between 700 and 800 or more, and I think they, there's bigger and better things ahead for both those outstanding events. And then we have a new event called the Governor's 5K, which is on August 30th. On September 27th, we have our eighth Hidnite Festival Road Race, which we hold in conjunction with the Hidnite Festival. And again, this will be our eighth year of doing this. We have a half marathon, a 10K, and a 5K, and it's just a great event. It's held each year with the, with the festival. On October 18th, we have the Alexander County Family YMCA Apple Festival, which is a 5K run, which is held in conjunction, of course, with the Apple Festival. There's a couple of other runs that, that we'll have this year. Last year, the first Race to the Cove was held at Hickory Cove Bible Camp, I believe it was, and it's on November 1st, and the contact information is there. We're also having a longer event on November 15th called the Rocky 50K, which is a 50K run, which is 31 miles. So if you don't get enough, you can test yourself on that, and that's, that'll be held at Rocky Face Park. And then to close out the year, we have the Rotary Reindeer Romp, which is an 8K and Fun Run, and that's held on November 29th. All those events are, going into their second year, except for the Rocky 50K and the Governor's 5K. And before we see the video, just want to point out that if you need more information about these events, go to www.alexandercountync.gov/events. That's www.alexandercountync.gov/events. We also do two other events in the county, and one, as I mentioned earlier, was Rocky Fest, and the other is the Alexander County Christmas Parade. And we start planning those events long in advance, so just want to mention those. At this time, Chad, will you play the video for Rocky Fest?
The public is invited to attend Rocky Fest 2014 on Saturday, May 24th, at Rocky Face Mountain Recreational Area, Rocky Face Park, to celebrate the park's second anniversary. The day-long event will feature activities for the entire family, including 5K and 10K trail races, rock climbing classes, children's activities, live music, food, and guided nature hikes. The trail races will begin at 8:30 a.m. and will feature a hilly course, making it one of the most challenging in the state. Special awards will go to the top three overall males and females in each race. All finishers will receive a custom medal, and awards will be presented as participants finish the race. There will be no age group awards. Early entry fee for the 5K and 10K is $20 if postmarked by May 15th. Registration will increase $10 for all race registrations after May 15th, including race day. Tech waterwicking shirts are guaranteed for all pre-registered runners, so early registration is encouraged. Checks should be mailed payable to Alexander County and mailed to Rocky Face Trail Race, 621 Loudoun Road, Taylorsville, North Carolina, 28681. No refunds will be available. Race numbers and shirts may be picked up at the park on Friday, May 23rd, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Late registration will also be accepted at that time. Registration will also be available on race day from 7 until 8 a.m. at the picnic shelter. To register, contact Rick French at 828-632-9332, or rfranch@alexandercountync.gov. Also, free rock climbing classes will be offered throughout the day, beginning at approximately 9 a.m. Climbing equipment and training will be provided, as participants will get a taste of climbing on real rock. A waiver must be signed, and a parental consent form must be signed for participants under age 18. Also, come on out for the live music. They'll entertain the crowd from 3 to 7 p.m., featuring the Shook Lane Band, the Sugarloaf Ramblers, and the Idle Time Band. Please bring a lawn chair and sit back and enjoy the music. In addition, free children's activities will be held from 3 p.m. to 7 p.m., including inflatables and face painting. And food will be on site. These food truck will be selling concessions to attendees from 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. Hot dogs, sloppy joes, potato chips, ice cream, fresh watermelon, and soft drinks are currently planned for the menu. Also, at 5 o'clock, park rangers will take visitors on guided nature hikes to explore the trails and learn more about the park and its unique ecosystem. Additional activities are being planned and will be announced when finalized. Limited parking will be available at the park, otherwise parking will be available at Rocky Face Baptist Church and other parking areas that are nearby. A Greenway Public Transportation Shuttle will transport visitors to and from the park. For more information, visit www.rockypfacepark.com/rockyfest, or call 828-632-1093. Rocky Face Mountain Recreational Area is located at 3451 Rocky Face Church Road, Hidnite, North Carolina, 28636. Again, for more information, visit www.rockypfacepark.com/rockyfest, or call 828-632-1093. Come on out to Rocky Fest 2014 on Saturday, May 24th.
And, and Mr. Chairman, as was stated earlier by our friends with the Lions Club and Habitat, there's an event, and actually, that weekend, on Saturday 24, Saturday, May 24th, there's also an event on Sunday, May 25th, involving the Crawdads, and that, that event, which was talked about earlier, there's also, the Veterans Committee is planning a event honoring our veterans. And so all those events are planned over the weekend, you'll hear more about that as time goes on, but we wanted to start tying those events together. So I just want to mention those things tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Mr. Chairman?
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman and County Manager Rick French, since Commander Mike Anis of American Legion Post 170 was not here tonight to give a, an update on the Memorial Day Service, which is a event held on the Courthouse lawn on May 26th, Memorial Day. It's a event produced by all the veterans organizations in the county, the VFW, DAV, and American Legion. And as a representative of the American Legion, being the Vice Commander, I just thought I'd mention that. And I looked at the calendar, I know there's two more County Commissioner meetings prior to that May 26th date, and I'm sure we'll have more information available. But as far as the exact date, if you want to put it on your calendar, and it's open to the public, and it's obviously free, and just to honor the people who have served in our various wars in, in the country, and also the veterans, and that is May 26th, Memorial Day on the Courthouse lawn.
What time?
I don't have the time with me right now.
It's 2:00. It's either 2:00, 3:00, I'm on my own side.
I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, all right. Anything further? All right, thank you, Mr. French, for that update. Item number 11, Sales Tax Update, the Colton County Manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have the Alexander County Sales Tax Report. For seven months, through seven months, we have collected $2,109,037. That is 58.4% of where we need to be, and actually, we're, the year has- we need to be. And actually, we're, the year has expired, is fifty-eight point three, so we're just a little bit ahead. We have budgeted three million, six hundred and eleven thousand dollars, so running about, about on course there. If you compare to this current, well, last budget year, we're actually a couple thousand, two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, I'm sorry, two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars behind. So, so, so far this year, we've collected two, two million, one hundred and nine thousand and thirty-seven dollars. Our whole harmless is a hundred and three thousand and twenty-seven dollars. So that's our, again, as we've stated, and as you gentlemen know, that we're running pretty flat, as was stated earlier, on our sales tax. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I think the whole thing will be pointed out, Mr. French, when we were at the association meeting, the district meeting, we weren't the only county complaining about the way taxes were distributed.
Right.
It was nice to hear someone else finally get up at a meeting and say what I've been saying for eight years. Seems like it's all I've ever talked about to them. Item number twelve, anybody have any other questions? I apologize, gentlemen. If not, okay.
Rick, do you have any, any forecast from the state as far as projections for the rest of the year? Anything coming down the pipe at all?
I don't have it currently, but I will have in the next thirty days.
Item number twelve, board appointments and reappointments. Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel on Aging appoint Bonnie Sims, Jerry Perry, Lisa Smith for three years. Reappoint Jill Woody, Julie Sebastian, and Margot Mosley for three years. And on the Voluntary Farmland Preservation Board, reappoint Kathy Chatham for four years. As noted, we also will need someone to serve on the Western Piedmont Council of Government, MPO, RPO, Transportation Advisory Board. But those are the recommendations for appointments.
Now, that appointment you're speaking there, is that a citizen or is that the commissioner?
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
So be thinking about it.
I suggest that one of the commissioners start looking at their calendars and seeing what they can do to find themselves to be on one of those boards by next meeting. Should pass that word on to the two that are not here tonight. We need a decision by next meeting. Needs to have, I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I make a motion that we approve the appointees to the Counsel on Aging and reappoint the members on the Council of Aging, and also to the Voluntary Farmland Preservation Board.
My second.
Motion is made. Second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Budget ordinance amendment number thirty-two, Mr. French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number Thirty-two is to increase the budget for workers' comp insurance based on the unpaid balances of open claims, to increase the T E C S program budget for the state's amendment to the contract, one-time increase in available funding to provide substance abuse services for the high-risk, high-needy offenders, to increase social services budget for additional CIP funding, crisis, that's crisis intervention payment for the Division of Health and, from the Division of Health and Human Services, and to increase the library budget for receipt of N C Humanities Council grant funds for the Let's Talk About It book discussion groups and area scholars. And that's the only budget amendment we have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
I entertain a motion at this time, gentlemen.
I make a motion we approve Budget Ordinance Amendments Thirty-two, Thirty-two.
Motion is made. Second, is there any discussion?
Yes. Uh, Mr. French, can you explain the workers' comp claim one more time, the increase, the sixteen thousand increase?
It's basically, we have some open claims, and we settle up, and that's, this is what the amount is.
And we budgeted, we budgeted.
Yes, sir. Okay.
All right. So that's going to have to come out of general fund?
Yes, sir. Okay. That's it.
All right. Motion's been made. Second, is there any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number fourteen, Other Business, County Manager's Report, Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, some information, and I, under item number six, for the Bethlehem Ellendale Water Project, we can request additional funding from the, from Deener. And these are zero-interest funds in the amount of ten percent, which is three one, three hundred and twenty-one thousand and one dollar from the state without going back to the LGC for additional approvals. This could be paid for with our water revenue, but this will enable us to do more water work, which I think we need to do. And we'll have some other lines to, to bring to you for your approvals, but we can't do this unless you authorize us to write the state asking for these funds. The Deener amount that we, that shows is three million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And previously, the amount that we approved was three million, two hundred and ten thousand and eighteen dollars. So again, if, if we could go ahead and request the amount in a letter from the, from Deener, we will have additional funds to apply towards water as we move forward. Again, this is about another ten, ten-month to twelve-month project, but this will not impact the, our, this will only be paid for with our water, water sales revenues. It will not be paid for with any tax dollars or anything like that.
Does it have to be shovel-ready?
No, no. This, this wouldn't, this doesn't apply to that.
Okay.
It, zero-interest money is, you know, not, this has taken us four years to get this, these funds, so if we can get a little bit more money and increase water service, we need to do that.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve writing the letter, because this is probably the last time we get to do it for two years.
It'll be a while before we do.
It'll be a while, because we're not going to raise taxes. It's going to go down. I move to approve it.
Okay.
My second.
Motion is made. Second, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything further, Mr. French?
Uh, just one other thing. On, I'd like to ask for a, a meeting, a call meeting be scheduled on April the twenty-first. I know that's Easter Monday, but we're, that's the time we have talked to the COG about coming and talking to you about the EMS study and also the minimum housing code. But that'd be April twenty-first at six o'clock. It either be here, we haven't talked to CBCC yet, or at the county building. But if you approve that tonight, we'll schedule that and move forward.
But that meeting would be for the purpose only of discussing the EMS study?
That's correct.
And the minimum housing study, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's in this room?
Well, we, I have, we haven't asked CBCC if we can use this room. It's not, we don't know if somebody else already has scheduled something, Commissioner. But we'll, if, if not, we'll have it at our, at our, at the county office. It's for those two items, and with the budget that we're working on, when we present it to you, it would be, the presentation of the budget would be later in April. We wanted you to see this, this information before. So I think it'd be good information and good discussion.
Very good.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if, if the County Manager doesn't have anything, I, I do, you and I were talking just briefly about the date of the Memorial Day Service. I'm looking at the second page of the County Manager's Report, and like I said, I didn't bring the agenda with me, and I have two different calendars, one of committees I serve on outside the auspices of the County Commission. And the date for that Memorial Day Service, and Mike, this is maybe for your benefit as much as anybody else, it is May twenty-fifth, which is Sunday, as, as opposed to the twenty-sixth, which is on Monday. And if you need any information on that, I can get you the agenda and the start time and all that. Larry, thanks for correcting me on that.
I, I just, yeah, I'm thinking it's most times on Sunday.
Yeah.
Uh, move, I entertain a motion to have the meeting on April the twenty-first for the primary purpose of a work session to discuss two items only, and those items being the EMS study and the
Minimum House.
Minimum House Report.
Is that in form, is that motion?
I'll make it in form of motion, yes.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Motion is made. Second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Consent Agenda? I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda has printed items A and items B.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made. Second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. And gentlemen, at this time, that will conclude our regular session, and I'd make a motion that we go into closed session under General Statute One Forty-three, Dash Three Eighteen Point Eleven, A, to prevent disclosure of confidential information as regards to economic development, contractual, and personnel.
My second.
Motion is made. And second, and we will re, we need to tell everybody to understand this motion, that we will reconvene for the primary purpose of adjournment only. No accident will be taken. That motion's been made. Second, is there, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Opposed? Oh, thank you very much, gentlemen.